Nice to see everyone. The time is now seven thirty one and I will call our ready for monthly meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Sure.
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Gagani?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Oh.
I'm here, I'm here.
President Graber?
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three. I'm not sure if we have any visitors, but we do. We welcome you to the meeting and appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of the minutes. Did anybody have any questions? We'll start with the regular meeting minutes first. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the November eighteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes?
Caitlin has one correction of her own to put in. In eight A, new business flat roof replacement. The first paragraph, second sentence, what says metal roof should be roof membrane. So the
Rubber membrane.
Or rubber membrane. So it will leave most of the rubber membrane intact.
Okay, thank you. Dave, do you have a comment?
I'm having a little trouble understanding you, President Graber. Other people are coming through okay, but it's something, is there something different about your sound?
Well, I actually have a different computer. Can anyone else, is it hard to hear me? I'll call in.
I mean, it's, it's not impossible, but it's just different.
You're very far away sounding. How is that? Everybody else sounds like they're in the room and you sound like you're calling in from the next room over.
Can you hear me better if I get close to the computer?
Hmm, no.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound, or cash sign.
This is the fun part. Ah, the joy of these online meetings. There's always somebody who is having technical difficulties. I think that that's just part of the deal here.
This is my fourth meeting today. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm getting weird feedback, but I think I'll be okay. Are you getting feedback too?
Yes, you need to turn your microphone off on your computer if you're going to be using your phone. Or just go in your settings and you can switch to phone.
I think I just did it. Does this sound better?
Yep, perfect.
Perfect, now, thank you.
Maybe I'll need to bring one of my like teenagers in here to help me out.
I'm glad I didn't have that problem. I'd have to call some teenager and I don't have one locally.
I can loan you one. We refer to him affectionately as tech support and he hates that.
All right.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments regarding the November eighteenth regular meeting minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the November eighteenth regular meeting minutes?
I motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the November eighteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The November eighteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes have been approved. We're now on to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty executive session meeting minutes that we all received in a separate email. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding those minutes? And just so you know, and this is indicated in the, in, in our agenda, that the requested action is to approve those minutes and then also open those minutes to the public. Do we have a motion?
I will approve and open the minutes.
Okay. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes and to open those minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yeah, thank you very much. The executive session meeting minutes have been approved and they will be open. We're now on to agenda item number five, the November twenty twenty financial report. And the December twenty twenty invoices, we'll do, I guess, those five agenda items, five A and five B together. Did anyone have any questions regarding the November twenty twenty financial report or the December twenty twenty invoices?
I, I may have asked this in previous months during the pandemic, but the non-exempt employees, how we are over a hundred percent there in salary, is that because of the pandemic?
No, actually, that is because when we did our salary schedule and, and the job descriptions, we had a bunch of people who moved from the salaries non-exempt to the part-time salaries and vice versa. And so we now have more people who went from part-time to salaried non-exempt
Okay.
than we ever had before. But because we have to do our budget so far in advance, all of the, that changes, hopefully, twenty twenty one, it'll all be correct. Because we had all those changes in place in time to do the budgeting.
Right, it's no big deal because there's room in other ones that make up, I mean, within salary. I was just checking if it was a work from home thing or?
No, no, that's, that's the changes in part-time to non-exempt. And if you do look, we still come in well under those two lines are offsetting.
Okay, right, perfect. Jen, you are muted right now for some reason.
Sorry. You can hear me now, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So Julie, could you give us just a brief reminder of how, I, I know, I think this was maybe two or three years ago, we changed kind of our, just kind of how we fund the library where we used to operate essentially with our own funds throughout the year. We switched it over and we moved those, a, a significant portion of our fund into the capital replacement fund. And the village, then, you know, essentially, if we get kind of, you know, below our, our, you know, zero essentially, the village pays. But just, and, and the only reason I'm asking is because I was, I was noticing that our library fund is at like a million five and I was just looking at like our, what our monthly expenses are. And then I was thinking, well, I don't know if we're going to get to when our next property tax, you know, payment would, would come in. And then I looked back actually at last, I think June's minutes and I saw that we were in the negative at five hundred thousand dollars. And I remember that there was this backstop, you know, essentially from the village, but just maybe just expand and, and, and remind us of kind of how that works.
So when we did the capital needs assessment and we came up with the numbers of what we were going to need moving forward to do our capital replacements, one of the things that, as we were talking with village officials as well as the board here about how we were going to fund those and what it would take to be able to fund those capital needs over the, the next ten years, the village actually came to us with a, with the idea of doing an intergovernmental agreement that the village would, would basically be our, our operating reserve. So the village pledges village funds to act as our operating reserve so that we don't have to carry that extra six months or more of operating funds to offset the way our tax money comes in. So as you know, we are on a calendar fiscal year. Our, and the reason we're on the calendar fiscal year is because the village of Downers Grove actually changed that. The default fiscal year for villages and village entities is a May first to April thirtieth fiscal year. And a number of years ago, the village of Downers Grove actually changed that and made the library need a larger operating reserve. Because we went from having our tax money come in primarily in June and July, which had been month two and month three of our fiscal year, to our tax money coming in, in month six and month seven of our fiscal year. So we still get that, that same amount of tax dollars for the entire fiscal year in. It's just on a very different cycle because the village changed our fiscal year. So the village said, hey, you've been having to keep this other money aside. One, it was one point four was a million was accumulated in there at that time above, that was the operating reserve portion. And so the village said, how about this? We will pledge to use village funds because they carry a huge operating reserve. We'll pledge to use our funds for your operating reserve so that you can move that operating reserve to fund this capital, to seed the capital replacement fund so that we, the library would not have to raise taxes on our taxpayers in order to fund our capital reserve. What that did is it allowed us to kind of keep that, keep that tax levy going on that kind of three percent, kind of even the thing, three percent or less every year in order to meet our expenses and also fund our capital reserve plan. So we have that intergovernmental agreement in place with the village of Downers Grove and it has gone swimmingly and quite frankly, it is, it, it makes no big difference to what the village is doing because our funds, while they are separate on paper and here in the, all of the financial software, in reality, that money is all commingled with the village's funds. So for, for the library fund to go into the negative, it's just on paper. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, it does to me and thank you for that. Does anyone have any other questions or comments regarding the November twenty twenty financial report and December twenty twenty invoices? If not, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented at five A and five B?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve agenda items five A and five B that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani? Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The financial matters as presented in five A and five B have been approved. We're now on to the financial matters presented at agenda items five C and five D, which are the December twenty twenty financial report and the January twenty twenty one invoices. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the December twenty twenty financial report or the January twenty twenty one invoices? And I would also add, just Julie, in addition, any questions or comments the board may have, maybe just let us know kind of how we've, how, how we've started off the year.
Well, if the financials, we, you see the end of fiscal twenty here. Remember, these are unaudited, so the numbers can still change slightly as we, we look at what can, has been charged to twenty twenty versus what has been charged to, to, at twenty twenty one. And you will see that in the January invoices, some are charged to one fiscal year, some are charged to the other. We did receive over one hundred percent of our, of our revenues this year, which was fantastic to see after all the fears about tax collections and, and what COVID would do on that front. Really, we saw it in our rental fees and the fines. But beyond that, and sales of materials, of course, but all of our property tax revenue and personal property replacement tax revenue came in as expected. So that was fantastic. And on the expenditure side, we came in at ninety four point four percent of our projected expenditures, which is right in kind of the sweet spot. We don't want to underspend too much, but it's always nice to come in, in the black and have a little bit left over so that hopefully we can put that also to the, to the capital reserve fund for future capital expenses. I'm trying to think. Oh, and do remember that there is the additional invoice edit list that Caitlin sent today. That is, we had a server issue. One of our servers, all, even all the redundancies, there was a whole thing. Anyway, server has to be replaced. We're bringing in some help to make sure that it gets done before we open on the first and make sure that we're up and running and then everything can, can be swapped over and, and reallocated thereafter, but as long as we're up and running. So that has been added in.
Any predictions how long a server should last, this new one?
This one was already slated for, the, the one that died was already slated for replacement in twenty twenty one. It just happened a little bit early than we had originally planned. They generally last, depending on the server, somewhere in about the five-year range. And they're all part of Paul. His capital budget lines usually include the replacements of the servers as well as the replacements of our hardware in general, switches and, oh, he's always got switches and, and the Wi-Fi radios and, you know, various bits and pieces that they have in addition to the actual computers and servers. And I don't think I had anything else. Just a reminder that December was also a three payroll month for us. And actually, this December, or this year was our twenty seven payroll year. So normal year, we have, we have twenty six pay periods. In January, due to the quirks of the calendar, about once every seven years or so, there is a twenty seventh payroll. That's because, you know, three, twenty six pays at fourteen days each does not come up to three hundred and sixty-five, it comes up to less. So eventually there's an extra payroll. And as you can see, the last payroll in December was December thirty first. So there you go. So we'll be back on the regular calendar for a while and that won't happen again for, for a bit.
Well, it's nice too that we were at ninety four percent even with that extra pay period.
Yep.
And if I can just jump in, make a comment there, considering all of the stresses of twenty twenty on everybody, but for now, for this discussion, especially our library staff, to see a ninety four percent is, if you'd asked me this back in April, I would have said, no way. So good management and, and some good luck too.
Yeah, and, and a lot of folks pitching in and a lot of very judicious spending, once we were open again, people being very cognizant of the fact, every manager was very cognizant of the fact that we were going to be paying a lot more money for PPE and that, that that was going to be a budget buster for the maintenance department. And so they did everything from just cutting back a little in what they were spending to charging some things to their own supply lines and small tools and equipment that would in another year probably have been charged to the maintenance lines.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? And if not, do we have a motion to approve the December twenty twenty financial report and January twenty twenty one invoices?
I'll move.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. We have a motion to approve the December twenty twenty financial report as presented, as well as the January twenty twenty one invoices as presented. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The December twenty twenty financial report and January twenty twenty one invoices have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Jen, did we have any, or anyone, anyone in the staff, did we have any submissions or comments that came in?
We don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now on to, I'll, I'll work through this with public comment on other library business. Assuming there are no comments on other library business?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. You guys are doing such a great job that nobody is, you know, no negative comments, which is great, although we appreciate the, the positive ones that you forward on to us as well. So thank you. We're now on to agenda item number eight, new business. Agenda item eight A is the succession plan and Julie, this made me nervous when I saw this. I didn't want to see, you know, like, why do we have a succession? Man, I know, I know it's, maybe we should have it, but you're trying to tell us something here, like what's going on?
Nope.
So, but please, just fill us in on, on this agenda item, please.
Serving our public standards for Illinois Public Libraries, the newest version actually has in chapter two, Governance and Administration, checklist item sixteen is that the library has a written succession plan focused on both internal and external talent development to fill anticipated needs for library leadership and other key personnel. Although we had gone through this in the past and there is some, some precedent in the library's past for when a director retires or, or has to take a, a brief leave, there had not been a written plan. And so we wrote one. If, with the help of our friends out there at Library Lands who already had some written, the management team took a look at it and gave their input as well. And that was back in the fall and then I promptly forgot to bring it forward to you all, to show it to you. So, yeah, so now it's here for you today so that we can say that we've met all the checklist items in chapter two when we do our Illinois Public Library Per Capita Grant application, which focuses on meeting all of the standards for serving our public.
And I think it looks very good. It's hilarious.
Oh, and one question that someone had had prior was after the assistant director, how it was determined which managers would be tapped? And that is actually by seniority at the moment.
So I, I, so it, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Carissa.
I was just going to ask, um, so this obviously covers the library director's role and, and kind of that succession. And I think you said that the, the, um, the laws or, you know, the rules around this succession planning is also potentially go to other staff? I mean, are we, I mean, again, like, I'm, I hope I don't have to worry about Jen, but like, you know, are we also talking about the assistant position as well? Because that's a really, there's a, we would, there'd be a gaping hole if, if we did not have Jen. So like, that, how does, how does that kind of fit into this planning process?
And at the moment, we, we kind of have a, a group. Everybody kind of pitches in when we have another, outside of the library director, when we lose another management team member, it's kind of a group effort that we usually have. One person, if it's one of the managers, someone within the department who can step up and kind of take on an interim manager role. At least so far, we've had a, a person available in each department who was able to do that. As far as Jen's role, that would be more of a team effort among the managers to step in and take key pieces of what Jen does.
Got it.
And I'm assuming Julie, the fact that you would still be there in that situation, like maybe you could,
Yep.
You know,
Butch, I'm a big winner.
Yeah. Okay.
Just a little discussion. I don't think we've ever had one of these before.
I don't think so.
Not as long as I've been on the board and that's been eons. And I can specifically remember some time ago, probably two directors ago, when we were in the process of coming up with a succession plan for another group I was in. I made a comment in a library board meeting, do we have one of these? And the answer was, well, kind of, but and there was about thirty seconds of discussion and we went on to something else. And I'm very happy that this is being documented. No offense to president leadership.
I think also applying for the grant each year and the requirements helps
Well.
Yeah, those, those new standards really kind of push us all toward being our best selves. So it's a good thing.
One thing I was surprised about was in the, let's see, I think it was the short term. It was early on, like in the short-term succession period. Oh, here, I know, it was under authority and compensation, so page forty-five, page one of the succession plan, that one of the options was no additional compensation for, for acting library director? I was a little surprised by that because that seems like a, a hard sell for someone to take on all those new roles without any extra anything. So I was wondering about the inclusion of that and what the thought was there.
Well, and that does include anything under three months. So Well, and that does include anything under three months. So like two weeks would be in there. So for, for a two week time period, you might not do additional compensation. When you get to a month, you're probably going to be looking at additional compensation. So just that kind of, how long is this going to be? Are you really taking on like all the extra stuff or are you just keeping status quo for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
No, I noticed that as well. And I, I think from my perspective, it's kind of like, it's just additional flexibility for the board to take in to those, you know, take those, you know, the timing issues and kind of what's going on into consideration. So I'm okay with it. Although I know we'll take care, in, in the unlikely event that this is triggered, we would, we would be looking to continue, you know, doing what we can to support the library.
And making sure everyone had the tools they needed to be successful. That's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, this doesn't prevent us from compensating.
Right. Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay, do we have a motion to approve agenda item 8A, the succession plan?
I want a motion to move the succession of what? Approve the succession plan.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the succession plan that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The succession plan has been approved. We're now on to agenda item 8B, which is the outdoor pickup locker proposal. Julie, would you kind of fill us in on the details of this very exciting proposal?
So you guys have been hearing about this kind of on the back end for a while. This is something that we started talking about as curbside service became so popular. You know, how to continue that kind of convenience model with, and balance that with the staff intensive way we are currently doing curbside service. And so one of the, the primary options we looked at was pickup lockers. Now, we do offer that curbside service. We did actually offer it prior to the pandemic as an ADA accommodation for our folks. And they would just call the library and basically a CIRC staff member would run stuff out to them. Generally, they would, the person would park in one of our 15 minute spaces. I, in the Forest Street Lot, because we didn't have any, anywhere else at the time. And staff would run their stuff out to them. We do anticipate that that portion will continue when other curbside is suspended. So we will still have to have some sort of accommodation given just kind of the physical layout of our library and our parking situation. However, that 24 hour, you know, kind of grab and go really ultra convenient option is something that's becoming more, that is more and more popular with libraries all over the country. And so we really believe that this will, and it also helps to alleviate as we get to that kind of interim period when we're just getting back from the pandemic before, you know, we're kind of into our new normal. People who are not yet prepared to come physically into the library, how do we continue to serve them? So, we investigated pickup lockers. There were four primary vendors for pickup lockers for libraries at the moment. Two of those vendors have systems that integrate with your ILS, which is your integrated library system software. For us, it's Cersei Dynix. And that's their workflow system. And then two of them actually do not. And you have to use their proprietary software. And then it, it's all manual in the translation between their software and the library's checkout software. Of the two that integrate with the library's ILS, only one of them is actually rated for outdoor use. The biblioteca lockers are rated only for indoor use and are primarily used in academic library settings. So the DTEC lockers were the ones that we were looking at primarily. They integrate with our ILS and they are rated for outdoor use. The library closest to us that has installed DTEC lockers is actually the Plainfield Public Library. And they just installed those at Plainfield East High School. And that's about five miles from their main library. And so, library patrons go in and this would be very similar to our process. When a library patron places a hold, you get your little dropdown menu of your pickup location. The pickup lockers would be an option at that point. So you would just choose that. And then when, just as when your books are ready on hold at the library, you receive an email notification. In this, in this, you would then get the email notification that they would be available at the pickup lockers. Pickup lockers are extremely easy to use. It's a touchscreen and there is a barcode reader. You can just, if you have your library card with you, you walk up, you scan your library card. It tells you your, how many books you're picking up and asks you if you want a receipt and the door pops open. Super easy. If you've ever used lockers, they, they tend to use these kinds of lockers at like the parks and things as well. And let's see, what else was I going to say? Oh, and if you don't have your library card, but know your library card number on the touchscreen, you can actually enter your library card number manually. So there is that option as well. But you do need your library card or your library card number in order to do that. And that's one of the things that you can make sure that the notice, that, that would be something that we would work with Swan on the notice provisions to make sure that, that it reminded people that you have to have your card number or your card with you. Hopefully people's little keychain, tech, key tags would help in that situation. We, let's see, Christine, the CIRC manager was the kind of lead on figuring all of this out. And then as we got closer to determining which lockers would best meet our needs, Paul Regis, our IT manager, started working with her and we had to pull in building operations manager, Ian Nor as well, because among the infrastructure needs for this, we need a dedicated power circuit for the lockers. We need a data line for the lockers. And we also, once we started looking at them and space that we were talking about, we decided we also needed a security camera as well that would get a better look at that area. So the area we're proposing to put them in is, as you know, we took out, we had picnic tables outside for a while and took them away. This is the area where the picnic tables had been. It is at the Curtis Street entrance. It is right next to the existing exterior book drop. This is our at-grade entrance. So it's pretty easy to get to. And it is under our little overhang and it's actually just under the windows for the PR department. And there is plenty of room there for these. Off to the one side, there is an emergency exit door. So we would not be able to fill up the entire wall. These, these lockers are modular and you can add them in banks of approximately 15 lockers. And you can just keep going. You can put up to, I think it was up to something like 300 units. All, 300 total lockers altogether. So there's quite a bit of expansion capability. But our biggest stopper would be making sure that we kept that emergency exit clear. So we would be able to add on, but only a limited number overall. We do, we did actually get a couple of quotes. DTEC was not the most expensive locker, nor was it the least expensive locker. The Luxor one, I believe, were the least expensive of those. We're, what we're specing out here is a, the nine locker base unit. So that's the unit that has the touchscreen in it. And that's kind of the, the brains of the operation and operates all of the banks of lockers. We are adding two of their standard banks of lockers. There is usually a book return integrated into one of these. However, because these will be immediately adjacent to our book return, we will not need that. So we are looking for, to instead have two larger lockers in the space that would have been the book return. So this would be, so three banks. One would be a nine locker unit with the touchscreen and then the two additional banks added on. Murphy Security.
What is that number of how many lockers then?
It depends on, they, they come standard in blocks of 15. I believe that we're going to wind up, one of our banks will be, hang on, who, one of our banks will be slightly different because of the the larger lockers in place of the book return. I believe our total turns out, if I remember Christine's number correctly, is something like 31 total lockers.
And how many did Plainfield start with?
Plainfield started with a similar configuration. I believe theirs is only 29 or 28 actual lockers because they do have a book return in their unit.
And are there ongoing operating costs associated with this company?
The only ongoing cost, and you will see it if you look at the DTEC proposal on page, let me get to it, 56 of your packet, you can see that the first year, the the maintenance and the maintenance contract is included. And then in year two, that would be $31.95 for year two, three, four, and five. So they're holding that annual maintenance cost flat for those first, for the first five years of use.
And does that include like, there's something wrong right now? So, so we need somebody to come, it's not just kind of updates and stuff like that? It's as needed?
Yes, but they are, I will say that they do specify that their service hours are only like 8:30 to fourth, or 8:30 to 5:30. So yeah, they're not going to do a nighttime emergency call for you, but they will be out on next business day to take a look and, and do the troubleshooting. And what we have heard, they had some really great references from other libraries, not a whole lot in our area yet. However, Barrington and who was the other one that uses DTEC? Jen, I'll be, I'll keep remember, I don't remember. Barrington Library was one of them though, and they have had their lockers for a number of years and loved them. Barrington is a very sprawling library district and they actually have lockers in two different locations.
I think it was Schaumburg as well.
Was it Schaumburg was the other one? Thank you.
Julie, I have a question that I'm, I'm sure is not an issue at all, but it's about accessibility. If these are 75 inches tall from the picture I looked at, I mean, the tallest lockers are really, I mean, I'm five feet tall. So I'm just, and then if someone is in a wheelchair or something, I'm just trying to understand how, how would the library staff know where to place something if someone is in a wheelchair or has accessibility issues? Just trying to figure that part out.
We would have to have a note in the patrons record to choose a locker. And, and at the moment, I believe that there is actually a setting within the DTEC software that allows us to default them to, to automatically associate that number with an ADA accessible locker.
Perfect. Thank you. That was, that was my only concern. Thank you so much.
Along Carissa's question about service, something that I don't know if it would fall within their service is if there was to be damage, like vandalism. Of course, we could get funds recouped, but in the meantime, would that be falling under their warranty?
Yeah, unfortunately, an accidental or deliberate damage is not covered.
I, I think it's great and it sounds like we have a lot of flexibility to continue to grow with this. It's neat to hear that someone has it at two different sites. Intriguing to me that Plainfield chose theirs five miles away or five minutes away from their library. And what, what is the reasoning for that? I could see that as like a satellite for your library. What, what is intriguing is it's got to be hard for the staff to do that. So one time a day or two times a day, they have they go and, and fill the lockers.
Yes, and actually Barrington, it's a similar kind of thing because they have a very sprawling district. So they have one on the, so their library is pretty central and they have one way far north and one way far south. In Plainfield, they have two issues. Route 59 bisects the, the district north to south. And the library is on the west side of Route 59. And Plainfield East High School is actually on the far northeast end of their district. And so there is also, there are also train tracks that bisect the going east to west. And so between the train tracks and Route 59, people from that far corner don't make it to the library as often. And so that's why they chose that particular location.
And I have another question. Are these a metal material? Cause I know the ones I've seen are wooden. And then it, it looks like they're the size of a mail box at a post office, if you have a P.O. box, something about that. And then you have the choice for larger. And they're, they're kind of deep, so the books would go.
Yeah, they're, they're really deep and they're wide enough that you could get probably three regular hardcovers side by side. And depending on the thickness, two or three high, and then they're deep as well. So you could, I would say you can likely get a good dozen hardcover books in there.
And I have one final question about the app, an option to ask if you want a receipt printed right then when you pick it up. I, I don't know if those are timestamps that you checked these out at this time or something. Cause I thought each time you add a technical solution, you also have a problem for, for a breakdown of the technology. So I didn't know if, when the staff is putting them in there, if you just put a hard copy in there. Of course, you're, you're, by printing option allows you to not also use all that paper. I mean, so tell me the part about the receipts. Tell me, Mark.
So patrons already have an option to receive their, to receive their notices by text or by email. And so you can just have that option and not get your paper receipt and then you'll just get your, your regular email receipt or text receipt. And there would not be, and not generally would we put a paper receipt in with the books when we stock the locker because the books would not actually be checked out to the patron until they actually scanned their card and opened the locker. and opened the locker.
And I was wondering, as, you know, as you were talking to folks at Plainfield or anywhere, I guess, that has any kind of locker, doesn't necessarily need to be DTEC, how it's changed their staff workflows? So additional cleaning, I'm imagining there needs to be a sweep through at some point to make sure there's nothing like nasty being left in the lockers. And, and you know, the, you know, addition, when we have curbside and this and checking out at the desk, how that, is that's going to complicate things for staff and kind of movement of people and kind of just how things work. How, how have other libraries dealt with that?
In general, libraries do their, what they call the pick list, which is where we pull the books that are on hold for people. In pandemic times, we've generally been doing it once a day. During regular times, it happens usually twice a day. So my, I anticipate that eventually we will go, go back to doing that twice a day. And as part of that regular workflow where they're pulling those items and preparing them to go on the hold shelf, then the next step would be that individual would also have the, any items that would go out to the pickup lockers and they would do that admin part and, and put things in. They would also very like they do for the hold shelves when things time out. If that person did not come and pick them up, then they have a list that says that these are, are the holds that have expired. And they pull those off the hold shelf. They would also be pulling those out of lockers if they were not pulled up as well. So it's really, it's, it's one more step, but not a huge one. And we do anticipate that as people were filling the lockers, that, that part of that would be to check it out. Make sure that it was still in, in good shape and nothing gross was happening. And just kind of the exterior thing would be part of our regular maintenance rounds.
And the thing I like about it too, is that even whether it's during COVID or that period of time where it's just kind of hopefully soon sort of past COVID, it just, it just will reduce kind of the indoor traffic at the library, which I think will be, you know, I think, I think a good thing for the library. And just good for the patrons. I mean, people who can stop there, whether the library is open or not open. My question, I know that you guys will work on the logistics on this, but just kind of the, you know, the, some of the details as far as like how long you leave a book in there versus like how long you're, you know, you're filling it with another book and taking out, you know, just, just, and, and this is, I know stuff that you'll work through, but I'm just curious kind of what your initial thoughts are on that.
Our initial thought is to go with a three-day pickup window. But some of that will be what we can do within the SWAN system. Because currently we allow seven days for people to come in and pick up their physical holds from the library. So if you're coming into the building, it's seven days. We, for the lockers, we anticipate larger demand. And some of that may be seeing what the demand is and how many people actually want to, and whether we have a backlog or not. So far, Plainfield has not encountered that. I know Barrington did not. Did Schaumburg? Now I don't remember if they had had a backlog. Does anyone else? Jen?
I don't know if they had a backlog. I just know that they have DTEC, but I haven't heard any reports that they have from Christine.
I, I assume it's going to be very busy just because, just based on the number of holds that you see when you're walking through. And a, a significant portion of those people, I think, will want to take advantage of this. You know, if, you know, if we approve it, so. Mr. Humphries?
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. So first of all, I think it's a great idea. My only slight concern, and it's a, it's a positive concern, I guess, is whether we have enough lockers. The, the bid says two fifteens plus a nine, so that's thirty-nine, including two double-sized lockers. I mean, I kind of hope we run out because that, that means it's very accepted, but we might have to plan on, on that at some point. The only caution I have is, at all is, I'm looking at the graphic on the, oh, the one that was that you distributed here, the, the Grand Prairie, Texas.
That's, that, I will say that is just a sample and Grace would be doing our branded. That is one of the things, DTEC is not involved in that. We design our own signs now produces the wrap and applies it. So.
I, I, I understand that and, and we provide the graphic and, and Signs Now does the wrap. The only, the only caution I have is the village has a sign ordinance that would apply, I think, in this situation. And so I just want to make sure that we're within that. That it doesn't exceed it. And, and quite frankly, that it's, it's, the one that I'm looking at in the picture here is, I would consider that a bit garish for our, our downtown neighborhood. So I don't think we would do that, but I just want to make sure that, that we're within the sign ordinance.
Absolutely.
Well, I actually think on the decal part. I don't know how often those have to be replaced, but if you go through Union Station, this is where companies pay advertising all the time. And they swap those out every few months and they're on poles and they're on the stairs and they're on the floor. And if someone wants to cover that two thousand dollar expense for the decal and have something that also incorporates the library, something witty, right? And that we approve of the logo, that was a, a thought too for that. And I agree where you're talking about in your presentation to us. It mentioned that we can take some of the funds for this from the budget we keep for our furniture. And I would say part of the case to be made there is that furniture has had less wear and tear in the last year. So less replacement needed.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Perfect. I mean, another idea on the decals is how we're pairing with artists and incorporating something like that. I mean, enough, I, it, it's not necessary, but I think we could do some neat things around that too.
I think there are definitely some possibilities there.
Like, you know, how you do the contest with the bookmarks and all that. I mean, I, I don't know if you want to go that full, full route, but things you can do using the patrons.
I think it's a great idea, especially for, you know, there are times where I don't get down to downtown unless I'm like going out to dinner or something. So it's nice to just feel to step like swing over to the library. I do have a question on the machine. What's, I guess, the expected life of them? And then does DTEC then work on upgrading or is it just those get scrapped and we start all over again?
I believe that the lockers themselves have a much longer life. It is, if something needs to be upgraded, it is going to be the touchscreen and the scanner more than likely. And those, those will probably have a more of a seven to ten-year kind of a window, whereas the locker, the lockers themselves being steel and being in a protected area should last us more in the fifteen to twenty timeframe at, at minimum.
Refresh that memory. Do we have one fifteen-minute parking spot on Curtis now?
No, we have one fifteen-minute spot on Forest at the Drive Up Book Drop. At the Curtis entrance, we do not currently have any fifteen-minute spots. We have three curbside spaces that the village has allowed us. So it's what we were planning is to ask the village to, to make one of those a fifteen-minute. There is actually a fifteen-minute space that is in front of Smokey Tomato. So it's the, and the village may not allow us to have a fifteen-minute spot in that angled section right in front of the library. It may just have to continue to be that one right by Smokey Tomato. So it's just, it's the parallel spot that is just past the alley.
Prior Smokey Tomato, right?
Yeah, yeah. What used to be, I call it Smokey Tomato and it's not them anymore.
If someone makes announcement that they're moving into there, they could pay to have the decal with an arrow over there.
Come and see.
Sorry, I'm in sales.
Well, I mean, the other interesting thing too is that it's these sorts of developments that make, like some of the old statistics, I shouldn't say old, I mean, statistics we commonly use on like gate count becomes less. I mean, there are things like that that become less relevant, you know, as we kind of expand what we do outside of the physical walls of the library.
Exactly. And especially as we were just talking today with staff about virtual programming and the fact that virtual programming is here to stay. And we do anticipate that a number of our programs will probably transition in that direction and remain that way. Including things like book discussions will probably be, there will probably be a component of that for always now.
Well, we might start or expand our tracking a little bit to where we list gate count. We might have under gape count, we might add virtual program attendance and locker numbers. If we want to keep track of how many exposures we have.
Right?
Well, that's actually something I wanted to ask, but cause you know, we've kind of said, well, is this enough lockers? And are they gonna, you know, are they gonna fill up real fast? I mean, what is the kind of metric for, for keeping, for keeping them and, and or expanding them? So it seems like that, as Dave suggests, some kind of tracking around usage, you know, fill rates. I don't know, I don't know what kind of, exactly what kind of data you can get, but that would be very helpful for, when we have this discussion next year. You know, when the contract's up again or when we're renewing, to understand what that, what the picture looks like and how, how much they actually are used versus kind of perceived to be used.
And their software gives reports that do things like, you know, how, how long from the time the thing was put in the locker till it was picked up and, you know, average capacity. So I think those will help us a lot.
I think the company's marketing department will track all those things and keep us informed, shall we say.
Oh, and I'm sure that CIRC will keep us informed if we get to the, their full and we have a waiting cart to refill the lockers, they, they will be on that and we will be hearing about it.
This is my final question on this. It's not belaboring the point, it's not about a thirty-dollar expense, a thirty thousand dollar expense. Because we would never talk about a thirty thousand dollar expense this long. It's more about innovation for the library. But you, you probably have already considered this about if anything from that, from your Emporium, Jen, the Anything Emporium, I believe is the name. If small items can have a dropdown where they can go on the locker or no.
Yeah, that's why we've created a couple bins of, you know, double and triple the size to accommodate some of our large or anything Emporium items. So that's why we decided to have a couple lockers on the larger side to accommodate those.
But there might be some items. I, I know we have laptops now as one of your, I read in the notes. So although it's weatherproof, I don't know if you put that in a locker, right? So you would just not have the dropdown for that item then as a choice.
They, they would not have that, that option. As a matter of fact, the, a lot of the Anything Emporium item, the Anything Emporium items, depending on what they are, are frequently a, you actually pick it up at the service desk where it is housed. So like the, I'm thinking of the photography kit that includes the background and the lights. That thing is massive. It's basically like a, a small tent. And it's on one of those, it's one of those little wheelie bags and it stands about yay hi. So it's, it's pretty big. That will never be able to be in a locker. And due to heat and cold, we would not want to put a lot of the equipment items in a locker. However, for some things like some of our smaller STEM kits, absolutely, we would be able to put those in a locker.
Julie, can you just remind us also like the, like on the, on the cost? Like clearly, or I think, you know, because of the way in which you went out and obtained the bids, this doesn't have to go through a kind of a formal like notice type requirement. I don't know if it was, I don't remember what the threshold was for that. But we can essentially just approve this and go directly with DTEC.
Yes, and actually the public bid requirements for a public body like ours is for construction only. And because this is not a construction project, we would not have to go through the bid process, even if it were the slightly larger. And that threshold amount is now at forty thousand for the total project. This, because it's things like the wrap, really wouldn't count. So we're still under the threshold in any case.
And do you know what the cost is to like add another, like the fifteen? You know, I'm just thinking of if, if it is used significantly and next year we want to, you know, add another.
On the DTEC, it's about eight thousand dollars per, per bay. So.
Technology behind it. And then, you know, the, I think these are not cheap, but like it's the technology really that's really the, the driver behind us.
Yeah, it's more like twelve thousand dollars if you have to add the unit that has the screen in it. It's eight thousand dollars if you have to add the unit that doesn't have a screen in it. And given the size of what we're talking about, we would not need a second screen.
Okay. All right. Do we have any additional questions or comments regarding the outdoor pickup locker proposal?
No, I would like to motion to approve outdoor look up locker pickup because I like it a lot. Second.
Second. Okay, we have, we have a motion to approve the outdoor pickup locker proposal that has been seconded and thirded. So Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for bringing this to the board. This is a, I really liked it. Great idea. We're now on to agenda item number nine, which is the COVID nineteen response and phased reopening plan. Julie, do you want to talk at this point about the reopening plans or?
Sure.
The working stand?
Yep. So we are on track to open to the public on Monday, the first. We will begin with one hour visits and forty-five minute computer appointments. Those are per person, per day. We are, we're going to continue with the hours of service that we have right now, which is the ten to seven Monday through Friday, ten to five on Saturdays and one to five on Sundays. We are, we're going to go back to having a door monitor. The Forest Street entrance will be used for public. So basically we're going back to the same setup that we had when we first opened to the public back in the summer. So we know how to do this. We're, we're ready. And so we're going to take this step. We are going to be more stringent about masking in the library. It's going to be one strike and then you're out. So you'll get one warning from staff and then be asked to leave. We had so many people that were just repeat offenders. And by the time they had gotten to a third staff warning, they'd already been in the library forty-five minutes. Been reprimand, been asked by multiple staff to follow proper masking. And it just, it got to be such a huge thing that we're just, we're, we're done. We're, we're done with fooling around with it. Wear your mask or don't come in, please. Wear your mask or don't come in, please. So we've empowered staff to be able to give those, those warnings and to be able to ask people to leave for the day. We will be having the person in charge doing rounds during the day, walking around to each of the public service desks and just kind of checking in and seeing how things are going. We will have our first management team meeting on the Wednesday after we open. So we'll get a sense from those first two days on how things are going and make any adjustments to procedure if necessary. I'm hoping that if we can continue, I, Region Eight is doing well. We just rolled back to tier one before we even knew it. So we're very hopeful that we will be able to continue moving forward. But we're, we're taking that slow and cautious approach to see what happens within our region. And if things keep going the direction they have been going, things are doing pretty well. Our metrics are, are, are doing better for us in this area. One doesn't know with all the, with the news about the various variants of the virus, if we will continue in this vein, but we are hopeful at this point.
And it just came to my knowledge that after tier one, there's now a phase four from the Illinois Department of Health. So there's also been talks that will move even from tier one, one to phase four.
Yes. And actually, we were technically in phase four when they started this whole weird tier thing because originally we were supposed to roll back from phase four to phase three. And they decided, no, we're going to put in these other weird tiers. So that's when things started getting really wonky with the Restore Illinois Plan when they added tiers that hadn't been there before. So we'll, we'll see where we're at. When, when we were in phase four, before all the tier stuff started, was when we were actually talking about restoring, when we added time, when we extended our visit time and extended the computer session time. And we, if you recall, we were actually talking about adding tables and chairs and study rooms. And so I, we would love to get, that would actually be our library's phase four, which is our, our gradual return of services. And to be able to start adding, adding little things back like that would be amazing. We already worked through how we wanted to roll that out, so it would make for relatively easy implementation on, on those things. So we're, we're hopeful, we're very hopeful. The other thing that has come up is vaccination of library workers. Under the current CDC guidelines, library workers are in what they call their one, phase one C for vaccination. So our area is currently going to the one B. The Illinois Library Association has been advocating for library workers to be moved up to the one B essential workers. I did write that letter to the department, the DuPage County Health Department on that. And I know our village has been talking to DuPage County about government workers and getting our essential government personnel vaccinated as quickly as possible. So they are also working in that way to try to get our village employees who are frontline folks moved to one B. So as soon as we possibly can, we're going to get everybody vaccinated. We're going, we, we won't be able to mandate that people be vaccinated, but we can strongly encourage. And as you know, when we updated the Families First Coronavirus Response Act in our own way for twenty twenty-one, we did add for employer paid sick leave for that extra sick time that folks are eligible for, for COVID reasons. Vaccination and any side effects, et cetera, reactions to vaccination is a qualifying scenario for using that additional sick time.
Mr. Humphries.
Yeah. I was going to ask this question, but it got, it became moot because one of your wonderful library staff members works with us at the Community Kitchen in downtown Downers Grove. And I was going to ask if the library cupboard would be opening and she answered that question for me. So I'm very excited that, that it is.
The cupboard is ready to go when we reopen on February first. It is stocked in there, so.
Excellent.
Yes, and we do still have some, some funds from the Kiwanis Club of Downers Grove that, that kind of went, went dormant that, that gave us some funds and we are holding those to stock, continue stocking the pantry. And West Suburban Community Pantry will also be beginning their donations to us again.
And any way that the Community Kitchen in Downers Grove can cooperate with you, that's a joint project between Alex's Mission and the First Congregational Church. We're excited to be able to partner with you also. And a little under the table comment, there are some funds available over there too, so.
Good deal. We, we will start getting food back out to people and conveniently here at the library. So hopefully people will take advantage of that as well.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. So do we have, unless we have additional comments on this agenda item, do we have a motion to reauthorize the library director to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within the parameters of COVID nineteen response and reopening phasing plan through our next meeting?
I'll move to reauthorize the library director for the response and reopening phasing plan as presented.
One second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve agenda item nine A that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gugani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item nine A has been approved. We're now on to agenda item number ten, the library director's report. Julie?
I want to thank everybody for their responses for our equity advisory team, our additional community member. Several of you and some of our staff members have made some really great suggestions. So I will be reaching out to those individuals later this week and early next week to try to finalize that group and get us moving. I can't wait to get us scheduled for this. I can also let you know that we had our first library staff BIPOC support group meeting and managed, our PR manager Cindy Catry is kind of spearheading that effort. And she's very pleased with how things went with the first meeting and moving forward with that group. So great to see that happening. Our in-service day with Rashida Graham Washington and RGW Consulting Group was an amazing experience. We got very positive feedback. It was a long day, but it was a thought provoking day. We had great conversation and interaction. So I'm really looking forward to continuing with our EDI initiatives and getting the board's training scheduled. So you all, there are two, three hour sessions that we need to get scheduled and thank you all for responding. Everyone has responded to the little survey I put out about that. And I will be working to, with Rashida to get those dates, some dates on the books for you. And she, she does want a little bit of time between those for you to be able to kind of process. So those will probably be in two consecutive months rather than back to back or, or within the same month. So just so you know what to expect there.
Can I, I'll just ask, if there's two sessions, are they an hour and a half each or something like that?
Oh, it's two, three hour sessions.
Oh, got it, got it. Oh, so she wants to end by nine and so six o'clock would be your latest start time. Okay, got it.
Yeah, which is why I was asking if anybody could start before six. So we, we're, we're working on it. I'm, I'm hoping to be able to come up with the perfect days. So we'll, we'll see how that works once I actually take all your responses and, and her actual calendar of availability and see if anything actually works.
All our schedules will change by that time anyway.
I'm certain it will happen. And I just wanted to let you know that our Aspen Discovery Platform Pilot Project, so that beta catalog that we'll be testing out with SWAN, that project is moving forward. However, the rollout to the public has been postponed. The, the technical difficulties that they were having with some of the indexing and some of the grouping within the catalog have not been resolved and they don't want to roll it out to the public until they've had some additional time to work on, on that and make sure that it's, the catalog has to be right before they roll that beta out. So that, and our staff has been amazing on that. Our access services manager, Amy Prechel, our adult and teen services manager, Lizzie Matkowski, and adult and teen services librarian, Joy Mattson, and our public relations manager, Cindy Catry, have all been involved in that project. And one of the really exciting things, we were talking to our PR manager Cindy about today, just today, is that within the catalog, there are actually opportunities for like ads. So you can actually put in a banner that will pop up if someone is searching, like say someone is searching for books on family history, then a banner ad about our genealogy databases can show in their catalog search. So how about that?
Like Amazon.
Exactly. And they can also do like short term ones about programs. So say you're searching gardening and we have a container gardening program coming up next month. There it'll show. So very exciting prospects there. And as one of the larger libraries in the pilot project and one of the only ones that has an actual PR department, this is really something that Cindy can contribute to this beta project, making sure that, that those are, are being looked at and evaluated as part of this catalog. And then, oh, I just have one other thing. Diane Jakus, one of our staff members, a children's services assistant, who was honored just last meeting for her fifteen years of service, has decided to retire effective February fifth. And so we wish Diane well for her and a well deserved retirement. She is the mastermind behind the decorations. Those of you with young ones who enjoyed all of the summer reading decorations, like the giant marquee and the plane going through clouds, those were all Diane creations. And so she will be sorely best for her creativity and decorating skills, so. That's all I had.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Julie as in connection with her report? Okay, thanks Julie. And congratulations to Diane in her next phase. Thank you for letting us know. We're now on to agenda item eleven, which is trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments or requests for information? Trustee Humphries.
I had a couple of quickies. One is I was wondering if the internship program was either functional or going to become more functional again now.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned them. Octavia is back with us and we have a new social work intern, Teresa. And the two of them have, they are just starting again with us now. They are getting up and running and we are focusing on our social services resource guide and a social services webpage that will be going live soon. They will also be working, they will be handling the cupboard now and restocking the cupboard and kind of its administration within the library. And they are also working with pads. We are doing what they're calling move in kits for the pads folks who are moving into their temporary housing at the moment and doing some books and some snacks and some, just a little, basically a little care package. And so they're putting those together and dropping them off at the pads main facility on a regular basis. So we have two interns and things are going swimmingly. We're looking forward to the village adding a social work, a full-time social worker later this year, we hope, we all hope, keep your fingers crossed, excuse me. And they are, we will be watching that avidly. And hopefully working with them.
Item one A, I guess you, you kind of hinted at already, but I'm, I'm thrilled that we're working with the pads organization to try to meet the needs of people who are both food, either food or, or housing insecure. And as you know, the pads housing came to an abrupt halt back in March. But the pads organization now has over two hundred people in hotel or apartment housing. And anything that, I'm thrilled that our library is supporting them in that, that venture. The other thing I wanted to mention is I'm, I'm excited to see the foundation going strong through the pandemic and they've added some new people to the foundation board. And it, it just, it's increasing in number and editorially also in, in continuing to increase in quality. And I'm just very excited about that. This is what we had in mind years ago when the foundation was started and it's, it's now it's really happening. And there's some really good people. I just single one out, not, not because she's that special, but she's also on our advisory, our equity advisory panel. And now she's on the foundation board, Pastor Andy Voinovich from First United Methodist Church. And I think that's outstanding.
Does the foundation have any interest in the decal? I'm hot on the decal, you know?
We have not, we, we have not thought about that.
Yeah. I did, I said I had no questions, but I do, I signed up to donate blood on Friday in the parking lot.
Yes.
And when I registered, I couldn't figure out if you learn if you have antibodies for COVID or not. Does anyone happen to know?
I believe just knowing as a Versity blood donor, that yes, they, you do get tested for the COVID antibodies as part of their routine screening. And usually you can find that information on their website. If you're, if you've registered and are a registered user on the Versity website, you can go in, I believe it's twenty-four hours after your donation and see your, your status. And believe me, if you have antibodies, they will contact you.
I think you guys have every slot fall probably. I think I might have grabbed the last one and that was probably a week ago.
I believe so.
I, I should have, I, that just triggered another thing for me. I apologize. I, I should have, I, that just triggered another thing for me. I apologize. But is there anything that we can do to support your effort to get library staff people included in one B?
Not that I.
If there is, let us know. But I know that you and the ILA are going to be working very hard, are currently working very hard on that. And speaking very joyfully, I've been scheduled for vaccination on February 8th.
Yay.
I'm an old guy. I'm in one B already. So.
Dave, you should have it, you should have it televised. So maybe that will help encourage the staff members to, you know, follow your lead.
There you go. Take, take a picture and we'll post it.
Live stream it right on the YouTube channel.
There you go.
For the library.
I've been, I've been clamoring for that. I'm, I'm first in line whenever, when it happens. So.
You're right. Parissa?
I just had a quick question. And sorry, it should have been, I think, with Julie's report. But the Life in 2020 project, do we know how many people, media members submitted something for that? I'm just curious because we've, I've, I've known about other organizations that have done something similar. And I'm just curious kind of how many people actually have responded.
I know they've had some response and it was not really, it was not a huge number to start. However, piggybacking off another library's idea, they have actually started partnering with the school district, offering teens volunteer service hours for participation in the Life in 2020 project. And that was another library that came up with that idea because there are so few things that our teens can do for service hours right now. And so we're really hoping that through the school year, through this end of the school year, that, that we get more kids that are looking for that and, and participate.
That's a good idea. And Jen, I don't often laugh when I read the minutes, but I had to laugh at the, the seminar that you attended, the, the name Jerks With Homes.
Yeah.
That caught my eye. I was like, oh, was that a, was that a, is it a training worth, worth doing? Was Ryan Dowd a good trainer? Yeah.
He's actually phenomenal. He is excellent. And it's basically how, you know, people who are home secure, how certain members of that population view the homeless. And so, you know, it was just about looking, you know, he's, he's very big on empathy first and foremost. But so it was just, you know, how to combat people with that kind of superior attitude towards the homeless. So it was very good. And he's very fun. So you guys have a library? Do they have access to Niche Academy?
Actually, if anybody is interested in viewing that, let us know. We can actually get you access to Niche Academy. And you can, can go and view. And the Ryan Dowd, his webinar, especially his most recent webinar series, he's now doing these monthly one-hour events on all sorts of different topics have just been incredible. I just attended one last month that was, now I can't remember the name, but it was like conservative versus liberal, basically bringing together the two sides and healing. And it was a gentleman who was in Rwanda during the genocide, who is now involved in a lot of their reconciliation efforts, talking about the lessons from that and the lessons on how Rwandans are rebuilding and reconciling and, and overcoming this tragedy with, by being open and communicating with one another. It's, it's really, it was a very powerful message.
Awesome.
You made me think of one other thing. Chris, did you have more? Have you guys heard of the documentary A Most Wonderful Thing? I think that's the right name. It's phenomenal. I just watched it over the weekend. It is the first African-American rowing team ever. It started out of the west side of Chicago, out of a high school that typically one out of three children die by the age of 18. And all these people in the rowing team had seen someone shot by the time they were 10 or 11 years old. It's really, really neat. It might be something for a virtual program.
Is that on Netflix or is that?
No.
No.
I don't know. We don't have Netflix, but so probably Amazon.
Okay.
A Most Beautiful Life, along those lines. And then I also heard another interesting statistic today. My daughter is participating in a PhD woman's, a woman, you know, who's getting her PhD in a research study that she's doing on girls aged 13 to 18. And it is using a physical tracker for their, to check how often they're sedentary and how it relates with technology. And the statistic I didn't know is that girls that age are more sedentary than boys that age. And it affects their mood. So they also keep a journal. I'm, I'm thinking of your social work to interns. Like that might be an interesting topic to pair up, boys, girls and things like that. That study probably won't be finished for a long time, but something for the library to kind of track as well, statistics.
Sure.
Okay. Any additional comments or requests for information from the board? All right. Excellent meeting, everyone. We are now on to agenda item number 12, which is the adjournment. So I will adjourn the meeting. See you next month.